Representing the State Chamber of Commerce at an overseas function. It's all I think that's great for the city that our mayor is part of an organization like that can represent us around the world about that.
Pleasure.
So, yeah. With that, the first order of business is approval of the minutes.
We want to do a collection.
Plagiarizing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You won't have to.
Plagiarizing to the flag of the United States of America. And to the liberal public, which is hands, one nation, and one ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I used to make peace just like that. I loved it. They can't do that.
Okay.
Dirty Harry's colors. Who's dirty?
None of the minutes. They were mailed in the packets.
All moved to the room.
Zack out.
Okay, motion been made. Second, any further discussion? I guess people will call. Do we either?
I don't think we're supposed to. I can't.
Okay, well, we'll just take a voice vote then. I was in favor and Kevin sang on.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Minutes approved. Visitors and communications, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address counsel? If you could give us your name and address.
Yes, hi, I'm Mark Vigas. I live at sixty-two Bluegrass Avenue, just around the corner here. And I wanted to speak, we've been resident of Fort Thomas now for about two years and I really enjoyed our time living here. We moved, prior to that, we were living in Geneva, Switzerland, and prior to that, we were in Oakley for the, when I moved here to work for P and G. What I wanted to speak with you guys about today was a recurring issue with a property on our street, fifty-four Bluegrass Avenue. It's had an issue with property maintenance. For the entire time, the entire two years we've lived there, my understanding from our neighbors is they've had, this has been an ongoing problem for the two years prior to that, so about four years in total. And this is a detached, single-family house, I think three stories, and it's a rental property where the owner lives in Florida. They've been cited continuously for about four years for not maintaining their property, waste-high grass, broken gutters, trash and rotting debris in the front yard, as well as uncontrolled ivy growing up the side of the house. About four different families on our street have notified the city and kind of the process every summer begins anew where we start sending them letters to say, hey, the city sends them a letter saying, hey, you need to maintain your property to the acceptable standards. The first letter goes out, nothing happens. The second letter goes out, nothing happens. And then my understanding is another letter goes out, and then at that point, they sort of do the bare minimum to kind of meet the acceptable standards. Someone comes out and mows the lawn, but then the kind of rotting debris, the ivy, everything else kind of stays as is. And the cycle continues for another year. It's been going on for four years now. And I think even the owner just learned is no longer even living in Florida. His address isn't working, so the letters that the city is sending to him aren't even making it, they're getting returned to his under deliverable. So we basically have a situation where we have an absentee owner and a tenant who's not maintaining the property and a system to try to address that that seems to be broken given that they have for forty years sort of been flaunting it and have really done nothing to address the issue. And at this point, the house is in such disrepair that you have gutters falling down, debris in the yard, kids that are playing all around it, there's a safety issue from just the house basically falling apart and then not maintaining, maintaining their property. And, you know, I guess my question is, you know, given the high regard that I think we all have for the city is, it just seems like the process for addressing these sorts of issues is broken? And my understanding is that in other cities, they actually have a process where, given this sort of circumstances, the city is actually able to go in, have someone take care of the issue, like come in, mow the yard, remove the debris, and then bill the tenant, or bill the owner, I guess, in this case, which seems to be kind of a better use to solve the problem more systematically rather than trying to continuously send letters to these people and have them sort of flunk, you know, not take any action. And it just, I guess personally, I've just come to, as, come to you guys with the question of like how, what is a better way of addressing this problem because it seems like just kind of the same thing over and over again, like Groundhog Day. These guys continue to have the same problem and it's actually getting worse and worse every year and I think causing a safety problem, as well as obviously their home values on the street, everyone else getting impacted. So, that's my question.
Okay, thank you. What do we know about that?
What we know about it in the characterization in some part is true, or it has been, we went back and looked at the file because we've had that contact and there's been multiple years where this particular owner has been notified. And some of it is a seasonal issue, it's the high grass and the high weeds. And we've discovered recently that the owner has actually moved two different times. Apparently, they were in Florida and they were in North Carolina, and I think they're local again. So we've tracked the owner and it's actually the daughter of the owner is the occupant of the premises. And, you know, the hardship of getting proper notice is sometimes an issue. That's, that's really not going to change regardless of what system we have. But to this gentleman's point, when we make notification to an owner, under our ordinances, they're given a certain amount of time and that time period is fourteen days. So for example, an unsightly vegetation issue, that's a, that's a pretty good grace period and then it requires a second notice. And then we can file it in the district court system. So there's a, there's a lapse period of time and, and again, a repeated violation when you, in some instances, have individuals that just disregard their property routinely, you run into the same issues seasonally with the same people. I think our possibility for change would be shortening those timeframes for certain types of violations through our zoning text. But that is a zoning violation. So there's at least a potential to do that. Jan, you might want to comment. I mean, we've looked at, other cities do different things in some regards with their zoning enforcement. I want to say about fifteen years ago, the code enforcement board legislation went through, which is a little, and, and we evaluate that here at the City of Fort Thomas, shows not to, to function that way. And I, without, you know, looking at that again, I don't know that I would offer an opinion other than there were inherently some issues involved with that process. But also, the, you know, the issue of, you know, making a notification has always been an issue, but then the other issue that you raised with regard to the city entering property, we've never employed that practice here. And I know statutorily, it's possible to do that. Typically, there's a lien placed on the property, but it involves either hiring an outside contractor to do that type of work or having city personnel do that type of work and then create some type of billing mechanism.
What about the non-vegetation issues that he's making reference to? I mean, gutters that are, have plants growing out of them and are hanging off the house and other areas?
Well, I mean, that's a property maintenance issue. And we've, we've been to a property and we've identified a few things, but not everything's a violation. I mean, there are people care for their properties in different ways. For example, ivy on the side of the house is really not a violation per se of, you know, that's a personal choice. I don't know that we could cite them and get any resolution.
Like giving them off the same way. I mean, it doesn't address anything other than vegetation and existing ordinance. Disbarred.
No, the zoning ordinance addresses the vegetation. Any other property maintenance with regard to structure requirements with doing the property maintenance.
What type of safety concern are you aware of?
Like gutters, literally, so the ivy is going up and like dislodging gutters and then just a lot, you know, rust and lack of paint and things like that. I mean, so the distance between their house and my house is not that great. I mean, it's probably only like four to five feet. So like hypothetically, my two-year-old could be like walking past the side of my house and could get hit by a gutter. So, and what I've seen is, in the two years we've been living there, is they will address, they'll, the best it ever gets is they will mow the yard. The other things like the structural issues, they've had a, a downed tree in the very front of their yard, like half of a downed tree the whole time. So it seems like kind of superficial level things that they're taking care of to sort of like get the city off their back, but they, the bigger, the bigger items, the things that are probably more like safety issues, they don't take care of. I mean, frankly, I could go over there and mow their grass for them. It's more like the, the gutters, the, the tree in their yard, that kind of stuff that's just, that's more of an issue.
Because when you, when you bring up safety concerns, that brings up obviously a concern for probably everybody up here, but I can only speak for myself. But what is the, what are our guidelines for slap a condemn sticker on there if they're, because I have little kids also and I wouldn't want them to walk around there and eat something that potentially fall off the house.
Well, condemnation really deals with the occupancy of the home, you know, whether that it's, it's at a level where it's unsafe for occupancy of the homes.
Okay.
I mean, it would have to be pretty drastic to be able to condemn a property. You have to have multiple dimensions.
You can condemn parts of the property, they can't just.
No, you can only cite under the ordinances for compliance. You couldn't condemn the property simply because they have, you know, a couple of violations of the ordinance. It really has to do with occupancy, if the property occupant's safety compromised to the point that they have to vacate the premises.
I, arguably, I mean, it is not safe. They have small children living in it and I would say, like, they're, they have to have rodent problems. I mean, it is in bad shape. I mean, I can show you pictures of the list. It is, it's in disrepair. You know, and I, I would not, I wouldn't come in and like, I, I, that's a, I wouldn't take that lightly. I mean, I come in here and I'm, I mean, to the point that so many people are just constantly like walking in front of their houses, like shaking their head. I mean, it is bad. It's in bad shape.
And, and I know that our inspector has been there, so based on the recent complaint, we've, we've had somebody at the premises and I, and I know we've sent notice of the violation within the last week or so, based on that complaint, so.
What's the time frame of the camera?
Well, for, for a property code, property maintenance code violation, it's a thirty day. If it's, if it's miscellaneous refuse or, or high grass, it's fourteen days.
Okay, then you have to give a second notice, then?
Right.
Then it's immediate or?
It's actually, I think you're, when it's a seven days and seven days, so it's fourteen days. First note, a second note.
For the zoning?
For zoning violation.
Two different tracks.
Right.
It's a zoning violation for the vegetation. It's a zoning violation.
A zoning violation would be if you have miscellaneous debris on your property and/or, yeah, what you first described there. Those would both qualify and they've been cited and that's a seven day and a second notice for seven days.
What?
And that's under the zoning ordinance. Anything to do with the structure would be property maintenance, that's thirty days and they have the right to appeal to cities.
Is it, is that statute?
For interpretation.
Is it defined as thirty days or?
By ordinance it is.
Correct.
Do we know, have they been cited for property maintenance before? Do you know?
Uh, that I couldn't tell you for sure. What, what our record shows with property maintenance.
Because.
I know that, I know that Kevin was there and, and recently inspected in, there were a few violations, outside violations. We can't go into the home.
Right.
So anything outside for property maintenance.
And the penalty is fined?
Yes.
So.
But we have to, we have to, we would have to do that through district court system, through a criminal complaint.
Do you need it collected or to?
To, to.
To even enforce?
Yeah. I mean, our, our process would be citing and under our ordinance, getting proper notification if it's one time, two times, and then once we've exhausted that without compliance, we would file in district court. We've done that, I mean, we have cases that go that far to district court. And we would present that evidence in front of the judge and the judge would have to make the findings and, and find them or, or request compliance or both.
Well, I'm, maybe only Eric was here on the code enforcement board. Concept was developed under, under the statutes and I don't remember the reason that the decision's made not to pursue it. But, you know, the folks have been on here for a few years, you know, we get these concerns periodically and, and if you have a code enforcement board, that actually has some of the powers that are, you can use that, 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 so you wouldn't have to go to district court.
That's correct.
And undertake that expense.
What committee of counsel might review this and, and review the ordinances and, and see if we can't put more teeth in them and maybe entertain creating a code enforcement? What committee would that be?
Probably. Yeah, probably, because it would have to go within the ordinance.
Now, one of the things that's recently happened in Kentucky is we had three different statutory schemes for code enforcement. And some of them you got mean priority and some of you didn't, and the cities that have these are always debating which is the best and et cetera. This legislative session threw out two of those KRS chapters that pertain to that and they've passed a new code enforcement board scheme. It does not take effect until one-one of seventeen, so a lot of cities are starting to get rid of their old system and look at this new one. So the committee may want to look at the new code enforcement statute.
And there's actually a summary in the legislative update that you all received.
Well, that's so, I, I mean, to me, that's kind of interesting, but that doesn't solve your problem. And, and one thing that cursed me is, you know, with these notice periods, if somebody's ever been cited once, then if you have to, if you have to, or given notice once, if you have to give a notice again, there shouldn't be a second notice. I mean, that, you know, in other words, within the past year, for example, yeah.
But our ordinance requires the second notice.
Or we can change that.
Yeah, I agree. What I'm saying right now.
Yeah, right.
And, and to this gentleman's question, I think the, the only enforcing tool that we really have in a circumstance where there's repeat violators, we can, we can go to the court as a repeat offender and shorten that timeframe at least a little bit by getting them cited to court sooner than if we had a, a willing individual. And we run into all kinds of different zoning enforcement. I mean, you'll, you'll make the contact and they'll work toward compliance because really that's what our ordinance is geared toward, is not penalizing somebody, it's geared toward compliance. And as long as you're working with an individual, that takes care of itself. But if you have a blatant disregard for the ordinance or a repeat violator, then you can file it in the court system.
So is that Kevin's call, one to pull the trigger on?
Well, I mean, we have to give notification. If you, if, when you get to district court, you have to follow the procedures that you had in place or they're, or they're going to kick it back out anyway, so.
Have they been cited this year?
Yes.
Has that property been cited this year?
My question though is, it seems like they're able to comply though without having, without really resolving all the issues, like, so like the tree, for example, that's like the rotting tree that's sitting in the front yard would have been part of the citation it seems like, but they haven't had, they like mowed the grass but not taken care of that. So it seemed like they kind of like half comply and then that's enough to like restart the cycle.
Right. And I, I honestly, I'm not familiar with the tree. I mean, some of that's a little bit, sometimes that's interpretive or sometimes it's not something that really falls under a, an ordinance requirement. I'd have to see it to make a decision personally, but, I mean, we've had complaints before.
I guess all the people.
That's fine. We've had complaints before, for example, people stack wood adjacent to a property line and it's like, that's not really a violation, that's not a miscellaneous refuge. You see what I mean?
Right.
The same with the brush pile at the edge of the woods. That's not necessarily a violation of a city ordinance and I don't know, again, without looking at it.
Who would make that call though?
Our zoning administrator. I mean, that's the responsibility to do that. And everybody doesn't always agree on that, you know.
But it's his call.
It's his call. He's ultimately has to make that and really it comes down to trying to be consistent and fair and that's in honor of the spirit and intent of what the ordinance is trying to provide. But it's not always the same for everybody. We get calls, for example, of dead trees and it's like, well, you know, if it's a dead tree, it's a potential hazard. We'll send a letter saying you have a potential hazard on your property, but it's not a zoning violation to have a tree on your property that's dying, for example, even though it, it obviously theoretically could be a safety hazard to anybody. And then it's the tree that's shared on the property line and is overhanging one property. So there's not always a black and white resolution to those type of things, but we could certainly look at, at that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, my main concern is like to the point of, like, it just doesn't seem to have any teeth. Like, I just, they sort of disregard, I mean, they do the bare minimum and the situation just gets worse and worse and that's the piece that I think is frustrating for a notch of for me, but everybody looks at the street and know it. That's, that's the primary thing I'd, I'd love to see addressed is just the, how do we put it into it and solve the problem more system, you know, systematically?
And I, and I agree. I think there's some potential for discussion for looking at tightening up our, our ordinance requirements because that allows us to get it into district court, particularly with regard to repeat offenders.
Do you want to do that at staff level?
In general, the language that would create that, and we've never really done that in the past where, for example, the seasonal things like high grass and weeds, if, if they've been cited years prior, you know, can we identify that with a different timeframe for notification?
Do you want to look at that at staff level and bring some recommendations or should we?
No, I think we could do that. I think we could, we could look at the code enforcement board, for example, and, and I, you know, we, there's, there's some obvious things, but we probably don't want to get into that discussion unless we compare it to everything else. So we could framework that. In the meantime, we'll work with our zoning administrator, see if we can.
Yeah, you know, like I, you have a willing participant to take it to district court, so I'd love to, to join you in that, that, because it's, I mean, it's like out of control. I guess, the best way to describe it.
And, and again, just, just so everybody understands kind of the flavor of the court system, it's, you know, if we took every single individual because they had high grass and decided twice and put them in front of a judge, they're not going to be too sympathetic to us taking the court's time for that. Usually when we go down there, it is a repeat violator and, and I think in this circumstance, they would qualify. And we've had a lot of success in front of the judges at that level of repeat violators and they hold them accountable, but we have to have a process to act.
So maybe in your research and what you would present to us for review, we could include having our own enforcement board options and what that would entail?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, just a quick summary, at least of what the options are, and then we can decide whether we want to refer to committee.
Yeah.
We're on. Did you communicate with the tenant?
Oh, yeah.
Kenny, what's, what's kind of response that she gave?
But, but notice has been received now, we know we had, we got the right notice.
We posted notice on the property that's on.
Which is permitted, okay.
Do you know what notice they're on now? Are they on the second notice or they?
Um, I don't, I'm not sure, but they're probably pretty close because I think that bird is like, but I mean, because we were having trouble getting them served with notice, we actually posted on the property as well.
Okay.
And I know that Kevin's had some discussions with the tenant and that's how we found out some of the information about the ownership.
So when it gets to the point where you would decide, like, do I take these pieces into court, what's then the?
Oh, we would take all of our information down and then we have to file it in the court system and then the court system has to notify them of, of their subpoena or notice to appear.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and I'll be honest with you, sometimes that gets difficult because they have to give notice too. So it's kind of chasing the same absentee. And we help them if we can.
Something outside of that process.
That's where that helps, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Just bring it to our attention. Anyone, anyone else like to address counsel? It's noted here in the agenda that there's a proclamation, play on. Is there something to be read?
You want to read it?
No.
Are those normally read?
Yeah, I think you probably want to read it. We, we had a request to have this proclamation signed by the mayor and it, and it involves a proclamation recognizing pancreatic cancer and specifically Chuck Reed, who some of you may know, who's a native of Fort Thomas, who actually is in the local band DV8, and he's a pancreatic cancer survivor, so it's, it's a request to have that. There's a date, May twentieth, that's, and you can read the proclamation. I personally have had pancreatic cancer in my family. My father passed from pancreatic cancer. I also lost a close friend to pancreatic cancer. And it's one of the most fatal types of cancer and certainly Chuck is a survivor at this point and it's nice to see that, but they're doing an effort to recognize pancreatic cancer.
Proclamation. Whereas, in two thousand fifteen, an estimated forty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty people were diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States. Pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, is currently the fourth leading cause of cancer death in the United States and is projected to become the second by two thousand twenty. And whereas the symptoms of pancre, pancreatic cancer prevents, presents themselves, it is generally late stage. Seventy-three percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while ninety, while ninety-three percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. And whereas, the good health and well-being of the residents of Campbell County are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes and effective treatments. And whereas Chuck Reed, a native son of Fort Thomas, Kentucky, and the bass player for the local rock band DV8, is a local pancreatic cancer survivor. Driven by Mr. Reed's battle, the campaign Play On was created to motivate others to continue with the things that bring them passion and energy. Through the original campaign was intended to target musicians. Everyone is encouraged to play on to help end pancreatic cancer. Now therefore, I, Eric Haas, mayor of the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, do proclaim Friday, May twentieth, two thousand sixteen, as Play On Day. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of Fort Thomas, Kentucky, this twentieth day of May in the year of our Lord, two thousand sixteen.
And I might add, Fort Thomas has been host to Relay for Life for the last three years in Power Park and that was this past Friday. So that involves obviously awareness for all cancer patients and, and fundraising for the effort of cancer research and we've been having to accommodate the folks that are going on that every year. It's been very bad, it's grown the last four years and Friday was in, in the midst of all our rain.
Right.
In May, actually had a decent day and a, and a very, very good turnout. I see this gentleman, I think he was probably there, the school's gotten involved and it, and very representative in the community and they've all homing at Fort Thomas. We utilize the loop, the ball field and that works right now because there's no residents at the VA and I believe it that.
Okay, thank you. The, next item on the agenda is the Fire Department monthly report. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Peterman and members of council. I have a couple of things I want to kind of mention to you tonight in regard to report. First thing I'll start off with is the tumblers that you have in front of you. This is National EMS Week two thousand and sixteen and this year's theme is Call to Care. We certainly do that every day with, with all the responses that our personnel make. And also, it's the fiftieth year of emergency medical services in the United States. Actually, the Cadillac ambulance that's on the, the one picture there, I was in a Pontiac, but that's a one I started out in. So, yeah, I'm a little bit old, but anyway, I certainly enjoy doing this and have some great people that do it for us and for you all. And again, something I wanted to share with them and I have a few extra that I want to share with you too, this being the fiftieth anniversary of emergency medical services. So if you see our guys and Sammy this week, say something to them. Again, we're proud of what they do every day for our citizens. The next thing I wanted to bring up is the front cover of, of the month of report this, this month. Senate Bill one ninety-eight is the firefighter cancer bill. After twelve years of hard work in the, in the House and Senate, we were able to pass that this year. That singles out certain forms of cancer and the front cover, obviously Lieutenant Steve Rattner in the middle, flight by his two sons, Andrew, Ken and Michael. Again, a firefighter in Lexington, Lexington Fire Department and of course, our Secretary of State, Allison Lunder, the Grimes, signed that bill into effect on April the twelfth. And again, Steve did a lot of work on that bill and we know his passing of Monica's wife. But again, I just want to kind of share that with you. It's a good day for the RAS and for all of the firefighters in Kentucky to get that bill finally passed through, through the legislature. So I just want to kind of share that with you. Couple of other things in the report. So you noted, I noted in there that St. Elizabeth has donated sixteen doses, sixteen boxes of Narcan. Again, Chief Daley mentions it every month and something that, you know, the heroin epidemic that we have going on, that'll certainly help our supply of Narcan on hand and again, we thank St. Elizabeth for doing that. Also, I've got about three pictures in it on the same training that went on, again, with our trainers and the police department's trainers on April fourth and fifth and again, some great training down at Highlands High School, thanks to the faculty and staff of Highlands and Fort Thomas schools for allowing us to do that. And again, that was a great, great training scenario for our people and hopefully that's all it will be. Also on Ford Seven, we had the Stryker cot, I got a photo in there. Stop down, if you get a chance, and look at that cot, it's pretty, pretty neat. Again, we got that on a grant, forty-two thousand dollars with Kentucky Ox Valley and Security. And basically it loads the cot into the ambulance all by itself and so it does save on our personnel's backs, and hopefully injuries will be minimized in the run of that cot. So we're real, real happy with that. And the other thing was on April the 22nd, 23rd, we had the Arbor Day, and the City Arbor Day celebration, and some early day work. And Chris Russ did a lot of work, firefighter Chris Russ, did a lot of work in setting that up and working with, with Mr. Dale and the city staff, et cetera. And I think that was, again, a successful couple of days, get some work done in our parks and our trails. And we do, we do have a lot of great trails. And again, real proud of Chris, kind of taking the lead of that through the fire department and working. So just some things I want to point out. Again, thanks for what you let us do every day, and I just want to kind of share that with you as I share with my personnel, our will this week for National EMS Week. Be glad to feel any questions you might have in regard to the monthly report or the fire department in general. But again, that's my report for right.
Chief, the bill for the, for cancer, for firefighters, are there specific types of cancers that?
Yes, there are. There are. And I believe, I don't know all of them. There are specific types, and, and so they, they listed out X number. I'm not sure. I think it's around ten or twelve types. And if they fall in that category, then they can obviously fall into receiving monetary sums for that, for that type of cancer, for the families, et cetera. The sad thing is that Monica did not fall into that category. So, and, but anyway, Steve did a lot of work. He also, he also wa- is one of the many legislative people that run the hall, as, as I've done for years and other people have done for years, in Frankfurt to, to support bills. And so Steve put a lot of time and effort into that, and it's kind of real proud of him and his family, and want to share that with you on the front. But yes, thanks.
Any other questions?
I'd just comment, appreciate you pointing out the 50th anniversary of EMS. That's one of the things, you know, you remember if you've been on council for a number of years, there, you know, the letters you get every once in a while of not only the service provided, but lives literally saved by our EMS personnel. And that's something we should never take for granted. So thank you for pointing that out, and so we can appreciate that.
Thank you.
Move to receive and file.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Police Department Monthly Report, Chief?
Mr. Peterman and council members, I will keep this really short. I don't have anything new to pass on from what's already in. The April Monthly Report Hour, if there's any questions of the police department, I will try to answer them for you.
Any questions?
Move to receive and file.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Close. Motion carries. City Administrator Report.
Okay, I just had a few things in the memo under this, and I said, for one item I wanted to bring out that came up in the last council meeting was discussion on Annie's nightclub. I think it has a different name now, or Circle or something. I've, I've not been over there, so I don't know exactly what it's called, but I think that's the way it's referenced in old files.
Annie's nightclub.
Yeah, something like that. So I, I go back and research our files, and apparently this issue was first brought forth in the late nineties, 98, 99. And it was considerable amount of discussion at the time. There was interaction between the city and the city of Cincinnati through correspondence. There were noise level testings that were done. I think the owner of the property was involved in that, and actually incurred the cost to do some of those studies. And that, and I think some of the issues were, were resolved at that time, but obviously not entirely. I think we are researching, I work with Duke Dan and some of the folks in the, in the police department, and, and I think we've continued to have complaints periodically. I think they tend to be seasonal in the springtime, obviously, in periods of time when people don't have their windows closed, either the heating or cooling season. We tend to have more input from residents. I don't know that any of that research has led to be anything more than what we've experienced in the past. And my discussion with Lieutenant Jamie Denzal, who's one of the shift lieutenants, did some of that research. And we apparently have in contact with the city of Cincinnati. When we receive those complaints, we actually have a direct notification. We've seen response from them to identify the problem with the property at the time of the incident or the call or the complaint. So we've had some success with that. So really, moving forward, what we've agreed to is I think the police department is going to continue to document those types of calls, those types of complaints, continue to do protocol with contacting the city of Cincinnati, which is monitored earlier. That level comes from a certain number. And then if this council wants to, you know, revisit the issue of levels of sound or those types of things, we could certainly do that. I don't know that those last results indicated anything at this, you know.
I mean, is there a DB level that's considered unacceptable? Is there any point in measuring testables? Is there a threshold where, okay, now it's a violation?
I don't know. There's not a violation. First of all, we're crossing, you know, state boundaries. And that was the part of the issue before, was, you know, having jurisdictions and whatever. I mean, we don't have any control over anything that's occurring at that location.
Right.
So it really would involve cooperation from somebody that's literally on the other side of the river, whether that be, you know, the police department, the council, or their property owner. And I think that's the level that it got to the last time. Beyond that, measuring it, I don't think that they got beyond any measurable levels that people would consider to be, you know, outside of a boundary or a threshold. So whether that's the case anymore, I'm suspecting it's not based on our input from our police department.
But I mean, Cincinnati wouldn't have a threshold on their books that says if you're over whatever line DB or?
I don't think they do. From, from what I read in the file, they did not at the time.
If it's that loud here, it's that loud there, and that would be violation.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Time limit got mentioned last meeting, like River, Riverbend shuts down at a certain time. Is there any?
I did not have discussions with anybody involved with that property at this point.
Historically, have there been, if you're aware of, is there?
Time frame?
I think I remember somebody mentioned. Riverbend has to stop at 11:00, and I thought for statutory reasons or ordinance reasons, they, they're done at 11:00. You can count on it. I hear them from my house, but I know at 11:00 it's done. And it always is done at 11:00. They can't go beyond that for whatever contractual arrangement they have with wherever they have it. But I don't know.
Well, I think when comparing any to Riverbend, we're looking at, I guess probably two of them things as far as a business that's inside compared to obviously Riverbend being an outside facility. So I think there is a different, you know, policy for both. But like Mr. Dale has been saying, you know, we have a good relationship across the river. A night shift, Jamie works third shift. It's always good protocol when these issues do arise, whether it be in the spring or the fall. We just make that phone call. We try to communicate with them, and they work with us.
So Cincinnati gets a call from you, they do respond and?
Yes.
Have them tell me now.
Yes, they do.
So moving on from that, unless anybody had any other questions, just kind of updating a few other things. I don't have a lot to report on the VA homes, and you can see them. We had a conference call together with them to review the documents. And, you know, that's, that's kind of our next thing. We have started to have meetings with utility companies. That's, that's the other big cost item. So we've initiated, we're actually met with Duke Energy already to look at infrastructure improvements and the costs associated with those, to try to formulate those numbers into the development plan. I, you know, I wish I could sit here and tell you there's more to report than that. Unfortunately, there's not. It really is in the VA's hands, and I know you've heard that before. But we continue to be, you know, a little bit up against their timeframes, and when they respond to us. So we are pushing to have that. We do have a developer that's very interested in projects, and we're continuing to work with them. So hopefully, there's more to report on that.
And at some point soon, Bloomfield Show is going to come to us for an extension on their agreement?
Right. I think it's at the end of June or early July, I think it's.
Yeah, we're going to have answers for you, I'm sure.
And, you know, and we'll certainly talk about the issues related to the project at that point. But again, right now, it's, it's, you know, the ball's really in the court of the VA. So we can't really do anything until we resolve that first issue with them. Our Citywide Yard Sale, first, first annual. We have had great response, a lot of discussion. People seem very interested in that. We get more every day. I think we're over 200 people that have signed on for the Citywide Yard Sale. It's getting for this Saturday.
Two thirty-five.
Two thirty-five?
Yeah.
So literally 35 more people since last week. I think this week will continue to grow, especially if there's a bit of good weather on Saturday. Let's all hope that happens.
Is the participant list going to be easily accessible? I mean, I don't think it is now.
It's not.
It's closer to the event time it would be?
I actually made a deadline, which we probably need to do next year because there's, there's no way I can continue to update that map, you know. So I made the deadline tomorrow at noon, which hopefully Fort Thomas Matters will update that, and the newspaper is going to put it on their website. And then after that, the map will be up and the list.
Okay.
And so it'll be.
And then the whatever inside Fort Thomas, what, not, what's the?
My Fort Thomas.
My Fort Thomas.
I fixed it.
Did they fix the hours?
I, I fixed it, yeah.
Okay.
So again, well received. Hopefully, we have good weather. Obviously, those types of things require good weather. So, and we're learning a little bit about the process. But we think we have something that, you know, certainly for the public, has an opportunity to kind of consolidate that. I think people have reacted to that very well. So that's what we're seeing on that. Our street program, we have bid openings this Wednesday. So at our next meeting, we will have a recommendation on a potential contractor for our program. I noted in here as well, several things regarding Kentucky Department of Transportation, just updates some of the issue you're aware of through some of the notices that KDOT puts out. The Memorial Parkway Bridge, if you will, I guess that's what they refer to it, which is the overpass at Memorial Parkway over 471, is scheduled to have work done. They're adding sidewalk, and that is scheduled to start this week. The Waterworks Road Culvert Bridge that's been closed since, I think, February is actually located in Newport. But traversing Waterworks Road currently, you cannot go all the way through. It stops at that location. That one is scheduled to be bid this, the next month, and should be completed by the end of the year. And then you may have read or heard Rowdy is understudied through commission through Department of Transportation. They are expecting results of that study in the next couple of weeks. And then they'll be sharing that with the affected cities, which is really the city of Dayton and the city of Fort Thomas. And we'll learn more about what possibilities there are on Rowdy. Obviously, Rowdy, for a long period of time, has had issues with slippage. I can share that they actually identified 27 different locations between Tower Hill and River Road, where there's been slippages that occurred on either side of the road. So obviously, it's a large project potential. They're going to have to make some tough decisions on what they want to do there. And they are studying that from any possibility of, you know, from closure to total rebuild. So stay tuned, I guess.
Rob, I'll add to the Memorial Parkway Bridge. I was in a meeting with Rob Hens, the chief district engineer. And that bridge is actually going to be completely closed for about two months. I forget the exact time frame. I think it was July and August, maybe, mid-June to mid-August, I can't, so.
It'll, it'll vary with passage, and at some point in time, the on and off sections will be closed, but straight connectivity will be closed for a period, a couple of months at some point. And, and that's particularly, you know, traffic pattern wise, with the Waterworks Road, for the north part of our community, there's going to be no direct connection from either one of those parallel roads. So that's going to push traffic, obviously, onto the Grand Avenue exits, and potentially some of our other collector streets that traverse in or out of town, whether it's Dayton Pike or Culvert Run and so forth. So it'll, will change traffic patterns this remainder of this year. Couple of other things real quick. If you've noticed, the Anderson property I mentioned in a previous meeting?
How much back?
Is completed.
What's it positive?
Kudos to our General Services crews that did a lot of that work, and the Garden Club, certainly, who participated from monetary aspect and some of the design aspects of that. Looks really nice, and a lot of comment there. And the water fountain is, looks great. We've had some input about not having a, a dog bowl on there. The dog bowls are tough. We've had really tough experiences with the dog bowls. And, and so that was a decision that was made between the Garden Club and the city to not include that in that particular location. The Garden Club is scheduled to do their planting, their annual planting in the Central Business District. That's this Wednesday. And I haven't checked the weather. I guess it'll be great, I hope. So, and then the fountain at the Highland United Methodist Church was installed at the end of last week, and it actually is functioning and looks nice. So that's another little project that's involved in outside group. So that's there to be. And then you all see the legislative update, and actually, I have references in here, the, any of the firemen's bill, the type of cancer that are involved in that. Didn't know if anybody had any questions or wanted to have any conversation on that. Certainly, we can give any other background. And probably, and I mentioned just the one item that probably is more so than what's in here, what isn't in here. They did not address any regarding the spiking bill or any change in that legislation. So we continue to have those issues, and I'm sure that you all over here are struggling to, obviously, get through that process. Some of the ones that we've had every time. I didn't have anything else. Unless there's any questions.
Is there any new business that? Okay, no new business. I'm just hearing a report on this.
Reported disbursements, April 15th through May 16th, 2016. General Fund, one hundred eighty-three thousand, one hundred and six dollars and ninety-seven cents. Public Works KDOT Fund, seven thousand, seven hundred fifty-seven dollars and sixty cents. Reoccurring Debt Service Fund, one thousand, one hundred forty dollars and eighty-eight cents. CBD Revitalization, two hundred eighty-five dollars and forty-five cents. Waste Fees, seventy thousand, eight hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents. Police and Fire Pension Fund, one thousand, eight hundred seventy-one dollars and twenty-three cents. Total, two hundred sixty-five thousand, one dollar and sixty-one cents. We, the undersigned members of the Finance Committee, recommend that warrants numbered 301, 861 through 301, 903, and 302, 00 through 302, 086 be approved, and the treasurer be authorized to issue checks for their payment. Mr. Muller, Chairperson, Mr. Peterman member, Ms. Kelly member. Got it.
May the second. Any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Muller, Mr. Damon, Ms. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Peterman, Mr. Beasley, Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ordnances and resolutions.
This is a summary of ordinance 005, 2016, an ordinance providing for and ordering the street improvement of Barrett Drive from its intersection with North Fort Thomas Avenue to its terminus. Daisy Lane from its intersection with Newman Avenue to its terminus. Gaddis Drive from its intersection with Highland Avenue to its terminus. Haywood Court from its intersection with Winding Way to its terminus. And Winding Way from its intersection with Clover Ridge to its terminus, all in the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and all in accordance with the plans and specifications thereof, as submitted by the city engineer and as approved by the Board of Council of the City of Fort Thomas. And further, providing that the actual cost of the construction of said street improvements are to be borne by the city 50% and the property owner 50%, and providing for the payment of an improvement assessment. The Public Works Committee of Council conducted a public hearing on March 22nd, 2016, to solicit public comment regarding proposed improvements to Barrett Drive, Gaddis Drive, Daisy Lane, Haywood Court, and Winding Way. The following streets or portions thereof shall be improved as described in the ordinance, and the total preliminary cost estimate and the preliminary cost estimate per front foot are as follows. Barrett Drive, the preliminary cost estimate is forty-eight thousand, nine hundred fifty dollars, with five dollars and eighty-two cents being front foot to the city and to the property owner. Gaddis Drive, cost estimate of forty-six thousand, three hundred, with six dollars and thirty-four cents being the cost estimate for front, front foot. Daisy Lane, thirty-six thousand, one hundred dollars and five dollars and fifty-one cents. Haywood Court, fourteen thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars and five dollars and eighty-seven cents. And Winding Way, twenty-four thousand, twenty-four thousand, nine hundred seventy-five dollars and five dollars and ninety-one cents. Place C ordinance for complete description of specific work on each street. Place C the attached schedule listing property descriptions, frontages, and anticipated costs. Upon completion and acceptance of the work under the contract, the caution- Upon completion and acceptance of the work under the contract, the cost shall be assessed to the said lots and the owners according to the number of front feet. The summary was prepared by Jan Seidenfaden, city of Fort Thomas attorney.
Move to a person.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, both.
Mr. Muller.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Beazle.
Aye.
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Sorry. Motion carries.
Okay. Ordinance number O-06, 2016. An ordinance amending the Personnel and Pay Classification Plan for the city of Fort Thomas being ordinance number O-13, 2007, as it pertains to Director of General Services, Assistant to the City Administrative Officer, General Services Foreman, and the City Treasurer, Director of Finance. The city is reconstructing the Finance Department and the General Services Department to streamline the delivery of city services, maintain fiscal stability, and to better address future financial challenges. The Personnel and Pay Classification Plan is amended by revising the authorized positions and position descriptions of Director of General Services, Assistant to the City Administrative Officer, to General Services Director, General Services Foreman, to General Services Superintendent, and City Treasurer, Director of Finance, to Director of Finance, Assistant to the City Administrative Officer. The city has revised its organizational chart. The summary was prepared by Jan Seidenfaden, Fort Thomas city attorney.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, both.
Mr. Muller.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Beazle.
Aye.
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Motion carries. This is adopted municipal order, MO4, 2016.
Municipal order, MO4, 2016, a municipal order appointing Mike Rice as a member of the Fort Thomas Street Commission for the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and setting his term of office.
Move to a person.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, both.
Mr. Muller.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Beazle.
Aye.
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
The only other item is an executive order, EO6, 2016, reporting Dave Wall for the Planning Commission. That doesn't require actually, let's say, a mayoral appointment, so. I don't know. Is there any other business?
The only other item is, we do have the annual report from the Consolidated Dispatch that was not added on our agenda. You all may have had a chance to look at that. I don't know that Dale was ever intending to come and present that necessarily. We typically receive in files.
He has a couple of times, but normally he just sends it, I just deliver it to you and you just send it out.
I'm glad you brought that up, Chief. I mean, we've got.
Comments.
Are you on the board also?
Yes, sir.
I guess I should ask both of you if there, if there's anything you want to mention to the council to highlight the, I know like this year their funding was approved by, I think, I believe that was the issue, so the funding mechanism is in place permanently. Other than that, any highlights to point out and some of my.
Dale's done amazing job in the position of director. He handles it well.
No, I agree. Again, he was.
Some of the comments you said, the man's not taken back to him as I know Chief Daley has to. He appreciates those from the people that obviously work with here and he takes a lot of pride, like Chief Daley said, does a good job.
Well, for the folks that weren't involved when the dispatching was consolidated, Campbell County, that was a big, a big step in both service and naval stability. And Dale Edmondson, well, former fire chief here too, is the, I don't know what his title is there.
Director 911.
Yeah, so he's the CEO, so to speak, and they were the great dogs. Do we need a motion to receive a file?
I believe so.
Okay. I would move to receive the file. All right. Motion made seconded to receive a file of 2015 Annual Campbell County Consolidated Dispatch Report. Any discussion? Roll call, both.
Mr. Muller.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Beazle.
Aye.
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Any other new business or any other?
Just a reminder, we, we meet sooner than, we're on our June schedule, so we will meet twice in June. We have a committee meeting with Finance Committee and then we'll have budget discussions and obviously have, we'll call our agenda for the two meetings in June.
Thank you. And with that, the meeting is adjourned.
At the gavel.